Hey, this will be our regular meeting of Rainbow City Council for March 28th, 2022. I'm gonna ask Jeff Prince to fit a lead us in our invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given us. And God, we just lift all this city up to you and everything that we do, Lord, we ask that you be in the middle of it. And everything that we talk about and discuss, Lord, help us to have Christ-like minds and thoughts about everything that we say and do. Father, we just thank you for living in a free country, and we thank you for those who have served to give us those freedoms, Father. And, Lord, we just ask all this in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have a cellphone, if you turn it to a vibrate or to the airplane mode, we would appreciate it. And clerk, will you take a roll call?
Anita Bedwell.
Here.
Randy Weiss.
Here.
Jeff Prince.
Here.
Jamison Jenkins.
Here.
Clark Hopper.
Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five has approved the minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th, and I'll entertain that in the form of a motion.
I make motion seven.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six is the VFW 8600 is going to present an award. And Ms. Garmin, if you want to step up to the podium and just give us your name and your, and your address, just for our record.
My name is Stacy Garmin. My address is 128 Hickory Ridge Drive, Glencoe, 35905. Good. Each year, the Veterans of Foreign Wars selects emergency medical technicians, law enforcement, and firefighter personnel to receive VFW Public Servant Awards. And here we would like to recognize John Andrew Willis. If you'll come up here, I'm gonna read the nomination, which came from Chief Bryant. John Andrew Willis is a patrol officer with the Rainbow City Police Department. The address is 3700 Rainbow Drive, Rainbow City, Alabama, 35906. This nomination is for the VFW Public Servant Citation. Contact number 2564422511. Officer Willis is a well-rounded officer. He's professional and courteous in dealing with the public. He is a field training officer and completed a basic SWAT course. He has completed a number of other classes related to his job. He cares about his fellow officers as well as the community he serves. He also serves in the Alabama Army National Guard and 1166 Military Police Company. Officer Willis is a positive example to the other officers he works with. He is an asset to the department. I respectfully nominate Officer Willis for this award because of the professional work that he does. This is your nomination letter. I'm gonna leave it right here for you to get a copy of that. We have a citation from the VFW, and it reads, "Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Officer John Andrew Willis in grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement in maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and the official seal of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States this 20th day of March 2022, Joy Shelley, who is our post commander, and me, I'm the junior vice commander." I'd like our post commander to come up with us because in addition to that, we have something that's a little better. A check for $100 from our post.
Thank you.
All right. Your nomination letter. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service.
You wanna, you wanna do a little speech, or?
I'm not a speaker. But I appreciate it.
Thank y'all so much. We appreciate that. Our police department's very close to our hearts, and they, they do some incredible things, and we really do appreciate the fact that you would recognize one of our own. Number seven, we had a 2017 Chevrolet Silverado VIN shown that we will, we were going to bid out. We received no bids, and in that, we're going to transfer this vehicle to the building department, and I would entertain that in the form of a motion to transfer.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight is to award the bid for surplus items of in recreation in the fire department. We received no bids, so we'll just take that under advisement for the future, and we'll decide what we're gonna do to dispose of those, those products or items. Number nine is to make an appointment of Bill Pendergrass for a three-year term to replace Willard Hart on our Board of Adjustment, who has served since 2005. Appoint John David Smith to the board as supernumerary, and Evelyn Musket will move into a supernumerary position also. And I would accept that in form of a motion that we appoint Bill, John David, and Evelyn.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I will say to, to Mr. Hart, he's done an incredible job. He's been on the board for a very long time and understood the inner workings of that board, but we're lucky to be able to appoint Mr. Pendergrass, who's gonna do a really good job. And, and I think this is one of those times when I have to say that some, you know, you'll hear that it's tough to find volunteers for these boards. It really hasn't been. I mean, people in Rainbow City step up and offer their service, and these are unpaid positions where they come in and they have to make, you know, decisions on behalf of not only this administration, but this council, as well as just, just doing the good work of the citizenry. And we really do appreciate them for that. Number 10 is to appoint Hal Murphy and Rodney Prickett to represent Rainbow City on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which has to do with our traffic planning, where we're in conjunction with all the other cities and towns in our area. We set out a plan that, that can be up to 30 years, set out forward to make sure that we're doing all that we can to keep our infrastructure both modern and keeping people moving as far as transportation's concerned. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we appoint Hal Murphy and Rodney Prickett to the CC, to the CAC.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I don't want to commend both these, these men. I think they're outstanding choices, and I think they'll do us well.
Thank you. Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 11 is to purchase a 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive four-door commercial vehicle from Donahue Chevrolet. It's on the state bid list for $44,964.81, and it's complete with the options and lighting package. And I would entertain that in form of a motion that we purchase that.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
That is for the police department.
Yes, that is for the police department. Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12 is to purchase a new Galaxy Outdoor Electronic Message Center from Daktronics Incorporated for $42,096.0 cents. This is a Sourcewell awarded contract, number 050819, which will, which allows us to be able to do a direct purchase. Funds will be paid from the American Rescue Plan account. And I would entertain that in form of motions, that motion that we make that purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 13 is to purchase a mower Max 24-foot boom for the street department from Co-Blintz Equipment and Parts Company. That's state, the state bid price, this is off the state bid list for $163,136.93, with some additional pieces that are 60-inch rotor head, which is $11,583.97, and also some additional optional equipment that is $15,450.0 cents, for a total of $190,170.90. And that'll be on lease purchase program. And again, that goes for our street department. That's for cleaning sides of roads and keeping our, our right-ofways mown. And I would entertain that in the form of motion to purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 14 is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign a lease of the annexed building located at 4414 Rainbow Drive to the Etowah Historical Society for one year for $10 per year with a renewal option. And I would entertain that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll just have to say that, that this is an incredible opportunity for us to keep history alive, and we've gone, bless you. We've gone, gone into that building, and it's allowed us also to just kind of bring that building up to date and, and do some renovations, which makes our, our whole city look better. And, you know, and while we're asking everyone in the city to, to do better as far as the aesthetics of the city, you know, we have to do the same thing as well. And that's one of the things that, it's kind of a great starting point. I have to thank our, our people in Parks and Recreation for stepping up and Philip for overseeing the, the project, and he's done a really great job. You'll hear about us doing, we'll do a little ribbon cutting, maybe a little dog and pony show for the, bringing the historical society into, into Rainbow City, and, and it's something that we need to do. We need to preserve our history. And because of that, I would ask that you authorize me to sign that lease.
So moved.
Second.
There you go.
Yeah.
You're saying all these things.
Okay. Is there, we got, those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. Number 15 is authorize Mayor Taylor to sign the automatic aid agreement between Southside Fire Department and Rainbow City Fire Department. The intent of this agreement is to make equipment, personnel, and other resources of each party available to the other parties. And I would entertain that in the form of a motion to authorize me to make that signature.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 16 is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign the proposal for S and M E Incorporated for environmental consulting services related to the implementation of the storm water management program for the Gadsden, Alabama, urbanized area Phase II small municipal separate storm sewer system MS4. I'm sorry, y'all. The total fee for Rainbow City's portion for physical year 2022 is $6,100. And I would ask that you give me the authority to sign that.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, any discussion?
Yeah, read it one more time.
Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 17, authorize Mayor Taylor to sign the temporary site use agreement for Alabama Power to use the Vivian Lee Maddox Sports Complex parking lots to restore electrical services following a weather-related event. Terms of this agreement are from March of 2022 to March of 2027, and I'd ask that in the form of a motion to allow me that authorization.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have, I will say one thing about that, and that is that we did look at that very closely to make sure that we weren't gonna suspend any service to Vivian Lee Park, just in case we were to have an event where we had to use the emergency services of Alabama Power, but still had the ability to use the park. And we got all of that worked out, and we're excited to be able to enter into an agreement with our service provider, Alabama Power, and allowing them a place that would be safe for their crews to come in and set up to do work in our city and surrounding areas. Number 18 is accept the resignation of dispatcher Sabrina Scholler effective Tuesday, March 22nd of 2022. Post a dispatch position for 10 days to end on Friday, April 8th of 2022, and I would accept that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 19 is to hire a new revenue clerk. Katie McDaniel is the, the person that we'll be hiring effective Friday, April 8th of 2022, and I would take that in form of a motion that we hire Katie McDaniel.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 20 is accept the resignation of Michelle Bridges, part-time animal control effective Sunday, February 27th, and post for a part-time employee in animal control for 10 days to end on Friday, April 8th of 2022. And I would accept that in the form of a motion that we accept her resignation and post that job.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 21 is Recreation Center gym floor, accept sealed bids on Monday, April 11th at 2022 at 4:30 PM to sand finish the hardwoods with five coats of oil-based poly, add three pickleball court boundary lines, and that gym size is 72 by 100. And I would accept that in form of a motion that we move forward with accepting bids.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 22 is, is forbid the cleaning contract for City Hall Library Community Center Boy Scout Building for a three-year contract. The current contract expires April 8th of 2022. We'll accept bids on Monday, April 11th, 2022, to open at 4:30 PM and pre-council, and I would accept that in the form of a motion that we put that out to bid.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 23 is Resolution Number 22-02, Retention of Special Counsel to Design, Manage, and Prosecute on an As Needed Basis for Dangerous Buildings and Unsafe Structures Program. And I would entertain that in the form of a motion that we pass Resolution 22-02.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 24 is the surplus items through administration. We'll accept sealed bids on Monday, April 11th of 2022, and I would ask that we would, that we be allowed to surplus those items in form of a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have any monthly reports from any of our department heads? Nobody? Council member reports and comments, and we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. First of all, I'm welcome, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, for being here. Incredible, outstanding organization. And Sergeant Willis, congratulations on your reward. Again, and there, there's few organizations in the country that garners as much respect as you guys do, and we really appreciate you coming, and especially honoring one of our own. It makes it special. During this time period, I'd also like to, you know, send out prayers for our troops and our fam, and their families, as they're in different theaters in Europe, preparing hopefully for what won't be the worst, and pray for the people of Ukraine. And I'm also proud to serve Rainbow City. A lot of great things happening at this time, and want to continue to see that growth and progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to congratulate Sergeant Willis. That's a very big honor. And we're very appreciative of how you represent our city and all of our police department, fire department, and all of our departments. But on this night, this is your night. And it makes it special. Jeff and Stacy Garmin are personal friends of mine. They've both served their country well. And I am very appreciative of everyone who has served this great country of ours, because we still live in the best country ever, ever. So I am, I think we're very fortunate to have the police department and the fire department, first responders that we have here. We talk about that a lot. I know it seems like a broken record, but I don't think we can brag on you guys enough for what you do. So I also want to thank those, I think, five people that we appointed to boards tonight. I have also actually know all five of these people, and I think we did a good job in picking those. Sometimes that can be a thankless job, because it is not a paying job. You're taking your own personal time, and I just want to say how much I and we appreciate people willing to serve this city. Glad to have the Etowah Historical Society moving in. Thanks to Philip Hollingsworth and our Parks and Rec and the mayor. I know he had a lot to do with some of the upgrades to that building, some decorating advice, that is. Did a fine job. But no, it's, it's exciting to see there's so much going on around the city. Everywhere you go, you can see something going on, and that's called progress. And just to be a small part of that, I'm very appreciative to be just a small vote up here. Alabama Power, I think we did a good job allowing them access to Vivian Lee Maddox. Our power went out and covered bridge two Friday nights ago. It became a block party. We had several of my neighbors came out, and the guy from Alabama Power came out and happened to be a friend of mine from high school. So next time your power goes out, think about Alabama Power, how much you appreciate them, because they do a fantastic job. Excited about all the progress at our park down there, the pickleball courts. I'm hoping, I'm having a little bit of a knee surgery this Wednesday. I'm trying to get ready to learn how to play pickleball. So I expect to be a pickleball champion probably in the next two to three years. I'm kidding about that. But we do appreciate everyone at the city and all you do for us. Some days it's not as thankful as some others. I'll put it that way. Kenneth Payne, I know, probably get a plug in for the Lions Club Annual Pancake Breakfast, be April the 9th, be a week from this Saturday. Is that correct? Appreciate all that you do with that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Bedwell?
Well, no, it was all of mine.
Yeah.
That was a while. He got my time, all my things. Thank you, Sergeant Willis. Thank you, the folks who have served. You know, we couldn't be up here and doing the things that we do, each, each and every one of us, without the folks who have served our country. So thank you very much. That's a heartfelt thank you. And yes, Kenneth Payne, quit whispering on the back row and pay attention. We've all got pancake tickets. They're for sale. Anybody that needs a pancake ticket, then just come right up here and get one. We've each got 10 to sell, so we need to get rid of them. Kenneth, we appreciate the job that you do, not only with the things that you do at the city, like all of our service people, but so much that you do otherwise. Thank you. So pancake tickets for sale.
Mr. Jenkins?
I want to thank everyone for being here, and I want to thank especially the VFW for being our guests here tonight, and Sergeant Willis. I can tell you as a deputy how heavily at times I rely on my sergeant. I know he always has my back, and to have a good supervisor is really what makes up a crew of people. If you don't have a good supervisor, you can't have a good crew. And I'm thankful that we have a great group of supervisors here at Rainbow City, and I just want to congratulate you on your recognition. And another thing that I want to talk about just briefly is our animal shelter. And I can tell you, I have two dogs of my own, both of whom, one of which was picked up off the side of the road, the other one that was gonna be given up. But our animal shelter has seen a huge influx of stray dogs. And the sad reality is that, that unfortunately sometimes leads to euthanize- And the sad reality is that that unfortunately sometimes leads to euthanization that is unavoidable. And I would just encourage you that if you have any plans, or if you know anybody that has any plans of getting a, a new pet of any kind that you consider adoption first, Christie Causey and her crew at our animal shelter do a phenomenal job, and they work very hard. And you can imagine the, the kind of burden it puts on a person to have to do those things, because unfortunately, that is reality, and that is what it takes to be operable at times. But I just want to tell you that their address is 4450 Still Station Road here in Rainbow City, and their phone number is 256-413-1242. And you can look and go see, you know, what kind of animals they have available. But if you know anybody that's considering that, I would just encourage you to remember that as an option. And that's all I have.
Mr. Hopper?
Congratulations on your award, Sergeant, and I appreciate y'all giving him the award. I really do. Couple quick things. First, I want to thank the mayor and the council for this historical, uh, society thing. It's, it's amazing. I'm, I'm a history nut. I drive my wife crazy with it. That's all I watch on TV, and movies I watch. If it ain't historical, I get up and leave, or I fall asleep. But I'm really excited about that. And I'm also excited about our new Mower Max. I think the two pieces of equipment that we got are dated. I know me and the mayor saw this in person, and it's pretty impressive machinery, is it not, Mayor?
It is.
And I think that's going to be a real blessing to the summertime as we clean up our roadways. I want to ask us to do one thing. I want us to do a resolution, if possible, to recognize the 2022 Etowah County softball champions, which was Southside High School girls' team. They won this weekend. I know that's a little bipartisan, because if you know anything, my cu- I mean, my niece plays on it. Okay, so she's a senior on the team. So yeah, I'm throwing it out. I'm not going to call her by what I call her, because I use the word Abigail, not Abby. But I'd like to see if we can do that. You know, I think they've not had maybe the best of years with a new coach, and I think this is something, just this, their 15 minutes for winning that tournament this weekend at Gadsden High School. And I'm going to give you a piece of advice. Yeah, I am. Okay? If you are a smokeless tobacco user, and you're going to Washington, D.C., make sure you carry plenty, because I promise you, my feet still hurt from trying to find a can. And it's twice as high. Now take it home, we, I'm done.
Thank you, Clark. I, I have a few, a few announcements. March 31st, which is on a Thursday, we'll have a groundbreaking for Alabama Farm Credit, which is going to be at 308 West Grand Avenue, and that's from 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock. We'd like for you to come out and let's support our new businesses. If you've noticed, we've had quite a few ribbon cuttings and ground breakings for different businesses, the new UPS building, King Insurance, and we, we want to continue to support our local businesses, and I would appreciate it if you could do that. March 31st is a special called council meeting for a public hearing for MWT Alabama LLC at 5 o'clock PM. Public is invited to submit written comments to the council at any time up to the conclusion of the hearing. April 9, 2022, which is Saturday, the Lions Club Pancake Day will be at the community center from 6 o'clock AM to 12 o'clock PM. Advanced tickets are $5, tickets are $5.50 at the door, and those tickets are available in our revenue department unless you are given or have, or get a chance to buy a ticket from one of your council members, and some of them are going to be discounted. I think Anita said something about hers being a dollar off. And so, yeah. Sergeant Willis, we appreciate so much what you've done. You know, I've already spoken on our police department, but our police department, fire department, all of other, other city employees are truly the ambassadors of this city, and they're, they face front our customers every day, and our customers, the people that voted us in and the ones that didn't, you know, that chose not to vote for us. And because of that, we serve all of those the same, and that's our intent in going forward. But we really do appreciate you, appreciate your family being here. It's a, it's, it's an honor to receive an award, but it's even more special when your family's standing there to, to cheer you on. You'll notice that, and, and Mr. Prince spoke about it, Park Lane, we're getting very, very close to getting to a service position on it. We ran into some dirt problems, and, and our street departments handled that, and just making sure that we've got the absolute best subservice that we possibly can. And we know that the dump trucks in and out are driving you crazy, but I promise you, we're, we're wanting to put together a very premium product when we give that, that local park back to that neighborhood. The turn lane on Still Station Road, if you've been down there, it's going to relieve an incredible amount of traffic, especially in the mornings and afternoons, coming out of Westbrook School and also down at the food processing plant in the city of Gadsden. And we, we just know that that's going to be a really, really helpful thing for us, and it's coming along very well. We had a couple of revisions that we were able to make on the fly, and they're, they're going to work, they're better. We increased the volume of that, that lane, and, and just a lot of good things happening there. And we appreciate our, our building department overseeing that, Joel Garman and the building department making sure that that, that job goes, goes across as, as planned. The historical annex, I spoke about that a little bit. Again, just an incredible opportunity that we were in a position to be able to bring them out of Gadsden, where they're leaving the Elliott Community Center there, and it's to be demolished, and we're going to be able to put them in our, into a really, really nice home here in Rainbow City. And I, I hope that you'd be able to come out and support us and support them in what they do. I had animal control down, Councilman Jenkins is already taking care of that. That is a tough spot for those, those employees to be in where they're down there, and they know that they're, they've done all that they possibly can in the sense of saving animals and sheltering animals and then adopting them out. If you get an opportunity to, to make a donation to them, you know, to that area so that we can do more for those pets, and over time, we feel like we're going to have to expand our shelter just so that we can help out in other areas of the county. And that's really all I have. Is there anybody that has a public comment? Kenneth?
Well, Pancake Day, I would like to see volunteers, anybody who can come out and help with this, because, and this is a fundraiser, so it's kind of like the nuts and nut sales, Pancake Day, Mark and Brent, that's the line, so that's how we have money. So anybody could like to come out and help, we would appreciate it. And April the 9th, and then, you know, I got a list. Pancake Day is maybe 14th, and then after that, I got another list, sort of, for the staff for that. Just appreciate anybody coming out to help.
We appreciate you, Kenneth. Kenneth just spoke about the Pancake Day for the people that are looking on the internet. And, and again, we want to support the Lions Club and their endeavors to help people. Anyone else? Commissioner Ramsey, would you come up and, and speak at the podium?
I'd rather stand right here.
Of course you.
Thank you. Now, I just want to commend you guys, I've been in contact with the Historical Society and spoken with the mayor about it. Just wanted a great opportunity, wanted the Rainbow City to bring that here, and the facility is first, it's just top-notch, and it's really going to be nice for them, a nice day for the history of the city. And I'm proud that we're ready to put that together and get moved. I still will, I talked to them the other day about that, and we have an idea of putting a big, a large screen TV up there that can run history video and all, and we're going to offer the ability to take that through the county, I believe, if you make that happen. So I won't be a part of that, I just think it's a big asset to our city and a big asset to our county. They have some really phenomenal pieces. I mean, it's not just one of the little history videos, some really unique stuff that they have there, it's top of the list. I'm excited about that. So congratulations. Get everybody out here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just so you'll know, that, that television is actually on the ro- on the wall now, so we didn't waste any time making sure that we could lock that in for a line item budget. And, but, but no, I, I do want to thank Commissioner, because during this time, when we're looking at these type things, you know, everybody talks about cooperation in government, and, you know, and it's, it's one of the things that we, we love to harp on is, is transparency and cooperation. Well, you know, that's happening. I, I work with, with Commissioner Inzer and Commissioner Ramsey continuously, where we're trying to make for a better opportunity for the people that live in and around Rainbow City. And, and I, I really appreciate the fact that they'll bring it to us, too, and give us, and give us an opportunity to, to help with, with the programs that they're wanting to roll out. But this thing with the, the Historical Society is, it's an opportunity for us to bring a, a centralized educating, uh, uh, society into this area. That's what they're here for. They're not just collecting collectibles. They're, they're bringing our students in and teaching them about the history of Alabama and Etowah County, and like Commissioner Ramsey said, this is an incredible opportunity for this area to hang on to something that is so old. We tend to cast out the old so that we can bring on the new, and sometimes we just have to dust it off and, and fix it, you know, fix it back up and remodel, and, and we've, we've done that for these people to have a really, really nice home, and we hope that it's a longstanding relationship. And I appreciate that. Anyone else with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn?
To make a motion that we adjourn.
So moved. Thank y'all. We appreciate you being here.